We do have some changes to the agenda we need to make, so we need to announce the tuition for next year. So we'll add that after two, and then skip to four. And then I need to add a second executive session at the end of the meeting for supervision of the public employee. Any other changes or additions to the agenda? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, then we're into our budget meeting. First up, we have a teacher resignation, so we have Kyle Duffy, physical education teacher at Union Street School. Resignation effective one-ten.
Yeah, took a special ed position, and we're fortunate enough that Brooke Willey has stepped in. I was in the gym with Brooke today, and the kids were having a blast doing a game I had never seen them do, having lots of fun. Brooke is rocking it, it's posted, so Brooke will sub, I would say indefinitely. I have some interest from someone already, so I have an interview I'm trying to set up this week, so looking good.
Is there a motion to accept their resignation? Steve, any motions or second?
Second.
Give the second to Jess. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we're into the one we added, which was the tuition rates for next year.
Yeah, so I apologize if every year I forget we have to do this by January fifteenth. So we need to announce our next year's tuition. Looking at our current proposed budget and looking at last couple of years. It's a stupid process, but we have to announce the tuition. And then we have to bill a tuition, and then the state allows, does calculation after the year's over, tells us what the allowed tuition is, and then we have to reconcile with sending districts if there is more than a three percent reconciliation that has to take place. We have less and less tuition students each year, mostly coming from Brothers Field. Last year it was, the announced rates were obnoxious, because as you can remember, we had no clue where the state was going and what parameters were gonna be, so in my opinion, we just had to announce high numbers just to be safe. We're actually billing this year a lot less than we announced. One district, I think it was Brothers Field, the colleagues said, "Why are you billing me so much less? So if I don't, I'm just gonna pay it back to you later, because the state's gonna say I'm not allowed to bill you that much." I think these are more representative of where we're gonna be. The secondary might still be a little high, but again, we're forced to put something on the street. This is my vision.
Is there a motion to accept Rick's recommendation for the tuition rates for FY twenty-six? Steve, any motions or second? Just seconded any further discussion around the tuition rates. All those in favor?
Aye.
Then next, we're into version two of the budget discussion.
So, I don't know, for a lot of information here, I hope most of you were able to get through most of it, if not all of it. Get to the bottom line, I think things turned out very favorably for us so far. I don't know what the board's pleasure is. You know, we put the requested information, or most of the requested information, up front. Don't have a whole lot of desire to go through that line by line, but if we have to, we will. I don't know how the board wants to take questions on the requested information. The one thing I didn't give you, Troy, that you specifically asked for, just because we have no good way to do it, is to how many open positions we've had each year for the last three or four years. Because of our posting system, especially in the para educator positions, we have people that are moving between positions, so it's, even though we might have ten constantly open positions, I got some moving from position one, to position three, to position five, to position eight. So it's hard to do that. The best way that I think you could evaluate of what kind of positions are open is look at your fund balance for the last three or four years. And if anybody read, put together the pieces I provided you, we're looking to come out of FY twenty-four with $2.6 million in fund balance.
Yep.
Which is not solely, but largely, a result of open positions. So, when there was a couple of, after this went out, there was a couple of requests that came in about the technology. And I'd be perfectly honest with you, didn't have a whole lot of time. And I've got the number of units that were given to seniors over the years. I didn't have a chance to put it into any kind of report, but that's 421. Looking at it, I would say on average, seventy-five a year. So then somebody, I've been told to understand the question, asked a question about the age of warranty on some of the equipment. Basically, we get a, manufacture is one-year warranty, we buy three, so we have warranty for four years. So anything that's outside of four years old has no warranty left on it. I don't know if that was technically the question somebody was looking for or not, but but I will say, I think we, and I give credit to the principals and Colin and Dwayne. We looked at the one-to-one program, and we ended up making adjustments that were far deeper savings than what I thought the budget committee was looking for. But if I misunderstood the budget committee, I apologize.
Does it make sense to share that?
What's that?
Does it make sense to share that document?
Share what?
The technology plan going forward in this savings.
I can probably, probably share that on the screen.
Patty, did you have a question relative to this, or was it something else?
I had a question about the pairs, but I can wait.
Yep, great.
The question about the warranties was actually mine. I was trying to find out, of the computers that we had, how many of them were still in warranty versus the ones that weren't? So that was, that had been my question. So like, we had been given a total number of computers, and I was curious which ones were still in and which ones weren't.
Yeah, so everything that is currently in use would still be within that four-year warranty period. And I don't have it in front of me, but one of you guys probably do. There was, I don't know, three, three-hundred-and-fifty that were in stock. And I would say those are probably fifty-fifty in warranty, somewhere between one and four years, and fifty percent out of them. But that's, that's my best guess. I'm sorry, I gotta log in for me before I can share. So, and if I start to go off base, I need my counterparts to help realign me. So, part of the change in the tech plan is not only what the tech committee requested, but also when looking at implementing technology within the new grade configuration that's being proposed. At Elm Hill, where we'll have pre-K, K and one, it was largely decided, it was pretty emphatically decided that they really only need tablets there, with the exception of a handful of first graders that maybe, don't shoot the messenger, but I can't think of the terminology better than high achievers, that might need to have some keyboarding with them. And we have, we have all those devices. We don't need to purchase any more devices, we don't need to purchase any new devices. For what limited use that grade level is expected to use them for, we have plenty of capacity. They might close for each other and run.
Oh, that was accurate.
Can I piggyback on that and correct me?
Nope, absolutely agree with everything you said.
Then at Union Street, again, because of the limited use at that grade level, everyone was confident that we could get by with a five-year plan at Union Street. So they would technically be out of warranty, or some of them would be out of warranty for one year. But based on our experience, the tech department was confident that at that level, five years would be fine. Because again, they're using it on a much more limited basis for the middle school and high school. And that saved our money, and I had all that document somewhere for different savings. Middle school and high school would pretty much stay at the four-year plan. And it was recommended that we continue to give the graduated and seniors a four-year-old device. Value somewhere between fifteen and seventy dollars. Seventy dollars, fifteen, seventy dollars. Is what we, Dwayne did a market research, plugged in something, the serial number or something, and said it was in good condition, and I think it came back at sixty-eight bucks of value or something. So that's where we came up with it. And it was, there was a survey of the staff, and although there were some that liked touchscreens, flip screens, it was pretty widely decided or recommended that they didn't need them. I think that was a thirty thousand dollar savings at that, so. So, yeah, so down here's where, so, and this sixty-three-seven was after we had already taken some technology reductions. So this isn't everything that the technology has been reduced. This is in addition to what had already been reduced prior to taking this plan into effect. Mainly being, you know, we dropped the purchase from a hundred per grade down to eighty-five, which is roughly the average class size. So that was a sizable savings that was prior to the sixty-three thousand. A flip screen was seventeen thousand bucks.
Any questions on that one? Everybody okay with those savings?
I'll raise my hand.
All right.
It's a small change, but the average is sixty bucks a whack. Times seventy a year, that's forty-two hundred bucks. If there's any value left in them, it'd be nice to keep them in the district and be used, rather than buying new ones. Minor, but I think every county counts. Got some more comments coming, they'll pick up a nautical address later, but figure that out.
Okay.
Do we ask, if the senior doesn't want their Chromebook, could they just, why give it to them if they don't, aren't gonna use it? Maybe they're gonna buy a laptop for college or something, so you can give them, I'm sure it's a...
Yeah, Bendy.
Yeah, we don't force the kids to take them. If they want them, then they take it. If they don't, it gets put back in. But what Rick was saying was that the warranty is for four years. What we're seeing at the high school level is after four years, you're not getting much. So they become spare parts, for a lot of them, and that's again, you said he looked at one, how old was that one that he looked at? So there's not a lot of value when we get to that four-year. These kids are using them at the high school level on pretty much a regular basis, so. But yeah, they're not, students are not forced to take them. We have a lot of them that don't get, take them.
Do we know roughly?
I don't, and that's, IT does that, so I apologize, but I don't know that piece, but I don't, you know, they've gotta be scrapped, they have to drop them off, there's a whole process for that. And a lot of times, the kids don't wanna do that, because they're finishing up with finals and getting ready for graduation, and some of them just forget, so.
You've got something on that.
Yeah, yeah. Ray brought up about Maine, the program they have up in Maine in one of your handouts, right? My daughter works in Maine, all right, and I know what they do, is they sell their computers, or their laptops, or their Chromebooks for fifty dollars. Good, bad, and different. You want one, costs you fifty dollars, they don't get them for anything. I'd be in favor of us doing something like that, and then I can look up the system that my daughter's school uses. They just got rid of a bunch of iPads for fifty dollars, and they were gone, the parents bought them, right? So rather than giving it to somebody, maybe just, even though it's minimal, still have something come back.
Come back to that one second.
Two questions. The first is, do we know what model the devices that are possibly being given out are?
I believe... Every year, a different model is purchased, so I, every year would be different.
Another follow-up is, are the ones that are not taken home, does IT here have the ability to totally wipe them, re-image and reissue, or is that another vendor service to be back in rotation?
Or staff does that.
Bendy.
The fifty-dollar fee, I get that, but I also would hope that we would have some sort of equity piece that that isn't always equitable for all of our families, to be able to afford the fifty.
They have that also.
Yeah, so if we, as long as we could have something to make sure, yeah.
The idea is, oh, I'm gonna get it free.
Yeah.
Well, I'm a taxpayer, I paid for that.
Yep.
So I'd like something in return. And if they can't afford, okay, then we deal with it.
Right, so I'd like a mechanism for that, just to make sure that we are including that.
It doesn't mean everybody gets a free computer.
Thank you.
I'd be interested in understanding how much time it takes to, if we're gonna do a resale program, is it cost-effective for us to wipe and get a computer ready to sell? Because if it costs us fifty bucks to get it ready to sell to somebody for fifty bucks, it doesn't make any sense.
I'd like us to look into that, just so you know.
Yeah, so, we can continue...
I think that's a continued conversation.
You can continue to have the programming conversation. And if you wanna say, hey, cut another fifty thousand dollars out, because we're gonna, or, actually, I wouldn't cut it out, I would actually put it in as miscellaneous revenue, a revenue piece, you know. It's just, it's not gonna make a material difference on the, on the bottom line. You've got a pretty...
There's more to explore there, I guess, with the...
You've got a pretty good budget, but it's looking pretty strong right now. I don't, I don't wanna get, I don't wanna get down the rev a whole lot.
Yeah.
Talking about programming, but it's really a budget, and a budget's really your best guess, like, you're gonna spend eighteen months from now.
Understood. We see a savings from, of what, sixty thousand dollars from that, so we'll...
What's that?
So there's a saving of sixty K with that, from what you just presented, right?
Oh, yeah, well, actually, we had, it was more than that. That sixty thousand was after we had already made adjustments. So there's probably, yeah, there's probably close to ninety thousand adjustments. It's in that change log, if you add all those things out, there's some serious money.
So we can stay there, come back to the equitable, how do we equitably distribute them or sell them? What's the cost to wipe them?
Yeah, theoretically, you got foremost, you have that conversation, you know, how you wanna work that out.
Understood. Great.
Just one other thing to consider, in terms of the likelihood of selling a used computer for fifty bucks, I would advise you to check how much it costs to buy a new one at Walmart, to see whether or not you'd likely be selling very many of them.
Yep. Eric.
One last thing, some math break out on the hundred-and-sixty-nine that are in stock, not spared, not new, age, freezing in age, from one to six years. If we just assume that they're an equal amount in each year, it's about twenty-eight that are maybe between one and two. So I hold one with two years, we multiply it times, how many added that number of devices we get? When you add that math together, it shows that there are ninety-two that would fall well into the one-to-two-year-old, in just in that batch. So that would be, I would assume, perfectly deployable to somebody else. That's outside of the spare pool, so just thinking, avoid buying more if we've already got some in that bucket.
Well, we are avoiding buying more, which we dropped it from a hundred to eighty-five. And those that are in that closet, that's what could exactly be useful. So if a kid drops one and has to go into repair, goes to warranty or something, you take one out of the closet, get the kid to use until his hurt comes back.
Those are the spares, right? Those separate from the other bucket?
Of owners.
The other owner, there's a longer pool.
Hundred owners, two hundred and five spares.
Right, right, all the same. They're just, the other hundred just happens to be in the buildings, but they're all served, they're all used for the same purpose.
I'm happy with where we ended with the Chromebooks, unless anybody on the board feels to. So I would move on from there, where do we wanna go next?
Hi, I just have a question, a couple of questions about the pairs. Why does pre-K pairs get seven point five hours a day, and regular education pairs get six point five?
The seven point five, Rachel, help me, but the, Karen, I doubt, maybe, Kelly can also jump in, but the seven point fivers are largely, if not solely, special ed. No, they're not, so.
No, you want me to take it?
Yeah.
Okay.
See? Going to lifeline.
All right, Patty, the seven point five are dedicated to pre-K. As you recall, when you were running your own program, there's ratios, group sizes, things like that. So in order to stay in ratio, we have to ensure that we have staff on hand, which means that we can't just operate solely with teachers in the classroom, we need to make sure we have pairs. And they need to be there based on the student arrival time and exit time. And new state regulations that went into place a couple of years ago, even though group size in pre-K is a one-to-ten ratio, is now saying that once you get to six, you have to have a second staff person on hand. So then you start getting into things like toileting breaks, somebody's got a bloody nose, staff are on a lunch break, or a fifteen-minute break, you've gotta be able to cover all that. So it's all very strategic in how it's set up to make sure we don't break any licensing regulations.
And I understand that about the ratio, Rachel, but are the pre-K kids there longer than the regular kids that go to school? And will that change once they go to Elm?
They're there for the same amount of time that any other student is in the district, and we are not anticipating any change in their enrollment time period with the consolidation.
Okay, and then what about the pairs, special ed, the floaters? Page, what page is this? Three, I think it's page four. I mean, it's one, one point, oh, it's one hour a day and two hours a day, and what are they doing for an hour a day?
Patty, those are part of our early childhood special education program, pairs, through the pre-K. So if a student is identified in one of our community-based programs needing support services, then we are able to provide a one-to-one in that program for a certain amount of time.
Okay, gotcha, now that you said that, it's like, duh, okay.
From here, where do we wanna go? I think we wanna talk about the grade shifts.
Well, if we're all set with data, then I'll go into the presentation with the PowerPoint. And we'll walk through grade shift and benefits cost and all that stuff.
I think that's where I'd go next, unless somebody else wants to drive somewhere. Hope we're good. Let's go there.
I don't know why that is not showing up. So, we're gonna all tag-team this, kind of in the slide we're on and the subject matter. But this is the overview of the twenty-six budget. Three main priorities in putting together this budget with the grade configurations as part of, you know, the request the board back at August or something, which was, which was a request of the public back when, a year ago, when the budget failed three times. And said, hey, you got too many buildings, you got too many administrators, you know, can you figure out a way to reduce those? And this is, this is an easy, low-hanging fruit. And so, the three priorities, you know, we're maintaining or enhancing student opportunities... You know, we're ma, we're maintaining or enhance the student opportunities, implement a common curriculum, and provide cost-effective education and services. You know, the priority one, um. Zoom in. You know, again, we're, we're restructuring grades pre-K through eight. Uh, high school is, is remaining a nine through twelve facility. Um, we're transforming Elm into a primary education center. And where, um, pre-K is getting expanded opportunities, uh, in the arts. And the fifth grade is getting expanded opportunities in, um, STEAM and extracurriculars. And we'll get into these more specifics. Pre-K building.
I cannot read that with the camera away. Um, so we're looking at, oh, thank you so much.
Oh, he's in your way.
So we're looking at the benefits of a building that's gonna be developmentally appropriate for the age group within the building together. Uh, we've returned Elm this year to a play-based learning, and so it makes sense to bring pre-K over and have it be pre-K to one. Um, that, we're really looking at an opportunity to have targeted instructions, so it's the same language, same approaches across that age group. Uh, it really gives us an opportunity too for our younger kids that are housed here in this beautiful facility. But they don't have access to things like art, music, physical education, library. And so this is gonna give them an opportunity to broaden their horizons and be able to change classes, if you will. And be able to engage in a larger setting with more instructors. And, um, really being able to reduce those transitions. We know research tells us that the less transitions, the more children are successful. And by putting pre-K over at Elm, we reduce one major transition for those students in their lifetime. And, uh, well, yeah, I'm not, I'm not doing the legislative thing right now, right? Okay, there's a teaser for later.
Okay, two-four caveat, I did not, uh, write these bullet points, but I will happily read them. Uh, benefits of a two-four building promotes an age-appropriate focus on building foundational literacy and numeracy skills while fostering critical thinking and collaboration. Uh, combining these grades two to four creates consistency and minimizes transitions during these cr, uh, crucial learning years, reducing stress and improving academic outcomes. Uh, finally allows for intentional scaffolding of social-emotional learning through peer collaboration and structured activities. It's, you know, it's not, for me, it's, it's not much different when you're looking at two-four versus three-five. Obviously, you get the kids in their early foundational reading, uh, a year earlier. Um, but in terms of, um, you know, commonalities, I, I think there's a lot of crossover between two, two-four versus three-five, so. Happy to read the slide though. Go ahead, Nate.
Yeah, so, you know, when we talk about, and, uh, the five-eight mo, middle school model, and this, you know, this isn't, uh, the first time we've looked at, uh, bringing fifth grade to Riverside. Um, uh, so things like, and I, and I think Rick already talked about, um, expanded opportunities in arts, STEAM, field, science, social studies. Um, also, um, uh, really working on focusing on building, you know, that sense of community. Uh, fifth graders would be part of multi-age advisories. Um, it allow us to bring, um, uh, gives fifth graders access to athletics. Um, uh, and, and just looking at sort of building resiliency and adaptability, uh, at those fifth, sixth grade levels.
Are you done?
No, there's one other slide.
Yeah, you're done with that one?
I'm, I'm done with that one. Yeah, so we'd be looking at bringing in, uh, you know, a departmentalized model. Um, so that would be instead of general, as teachers focused on, uh, one core content area. Um, uh, uh, which would mean, right, uh, kids getting used to multiple instructors. Um, and thinking about specialization for, for teachers to have a clear subjects. Um, um, that, that's real, that's really sort of the, the sort of, um, the big shift. There's some redundancy in there, but it's around, uh, instead of having one teacher doing everything, right? It's having, uh, kids with teachers who are focused on one thing.
Allison?
Yeah, I am.
Um, so looking at the common curriculum that we've been building, especially with the GDC. We are having an opportunity where it is completely coordinated throughout each site. And, um, I, I'm gonna just add in, I'm gonna go, get me to the next slide, up there.
I think that's me.
No, no, up on the screen.
Oh, I'm froze.
So it definitely improves our teacher collaboration during PLCs, and it streamlines our educational expectation.
So cost effectiveness, um, you know, purely by this shift, we're, we're saving a little over half a million dollars. Roughly, uh, two and a half, two and three-quarters cents on the tax rate. Um, in, in addition to that, we have been, as most everybody knows, making some serious investments. Um, into energy efficiency throughout all of our buildings, and we are seeing a return on those investments. Um, through lower energy costs, um, being budgeted, although you don't see a lower, you don't see a less number being budgeted. But the growth is less, um, because our, um, our uses is much less. And, uh, it's helping to, um, mitigate inflation costs of those, um, energy resources. Um, so we're gonna have to have a bunch of people tag team on here. Um, you know, Rachel, this is, uh, you and the success that you're, you're showing with, uh, what have you been, three or four years now of in-house?
This is fourth year.
Pre-K?
So we've been tracking the data since we started, just to see if our, our approach to pre-K works. Um, you'll see in the Roman numeral number one, we're saying no additional identification after completing the preschool with Springfield School District. So what that means is, in our particular model, we have stu, students that are identified and are on IEPs. But when we're providing services, we're doing it as a push-in model, so the teachers are seeing it. Additional students are included with it, it's being replicated across multiple days, so it's not just a one-hour dosage a week, or whatever might be prescribeded. And so we're making sure all children are getting access to additional services. So when I say no additional identification of the core group of children that have come through the Springfield School District, pre-K, transitioned on to Elm Hill. There has been no future identification of students needing additional support services. Research tells us that if you can provide all the supports and resources and educational opportunities in the early years. The brain is growing so fast and connections are being made so fast. It prevents the deficits later on. Now, this doesn't mean that there wouldn't be something that would come up down the road, who knows? There could be many things, but to date, this is where our data is showing us.
Could pre-K kids are in what grade, so we started the pre-K, public pre-K two years ago?
In twenty twenty-one.
So they're in, just help me, second grade or first?
They're in second grade, the first group is in second grade. Yeah, and that's of the students that attended pre-K here.
You're starting the whole second grade?
No, no, no.
No, just, you're just a subset, I'm just, that subset that came through has not, and are in second grade, have not had any others identified at this point.
Correct. Uh, we've also been tracking with this approach, what are we seeing as far as for students and transitions exiting off of IEPs, transitioning to five oh fours? You can see, the percentage is small, but it's a small subgroup too, that we're looking at, out of the population that have been able to access education here. Additionally, we're able to provide early ELL intervention in the pre-K. And so that's reducing the cost of ELL, um, support server, English language learner supports up at Elm Hill. And overall, we see a decrease in the need for hours and support services across the board for those students. Um, keep going? Yeah, okay, so the other thing that's been happening across the state for the last eighteen months is there's been a study group that the legislature requests to be put together to determine what the next steps were gonna be with public preschool. And that concluded in December with the pre-kindergarten education implementation committee report. You can find it on the, uh, legislative website, if you're interested in it, it's dated December tenth. The recommendation from that eighteen-month study group was, what do we do with pre-K now? We know it works, what do we do to make it even better? So they went through this with a group of stakeholders, they decided they would maintain the ten hours per week that is currently students are eligible for in the state of Vermont, and hold that for the three-year-olds. And then for four-year-olds, the expectation is access is going to be expanded to full day, full services. Means education is provided by a licensed teacher for the full day, special education services are readily available. And the expectation is this is going to begin transitioning into the public schools. We know our community-based programs have been closing rapidly over the last few years, especially in the pandemic. Access to a licensed teacher affordability is not something the private sector is able to really be able to, uh, manage. Additionally, this looks like, um, the direction they wanna move in for this full-day delivery. And, uh, there, there'll still be an opportunity if families choose not to do it, but they do want it in the public school system. And, um, you see the data, the last piece is since twenty-eighteen, we've lost more than a hundred slots here in the community. If you live here, many of you might remember, we had places like Sweaky Sneakers, Springfield Learning Garden, Suzy's Little Peanuts has closed a couple sites. Um, we've had five family childcare homes closed that were preschools, mine included. Uh, so unfortunately, we're just seeing decline, and students have no place to go. Which with no place to go means they hit kindergarten there, they don't have those fundamental early skills, they don't have the social-emotional skills. And that is more of a cost burden upon the system to get those students ready.
Um, budget contacts in, in, impacts. Um, if you go back to the governor's December letter after the tax commissioner's yield letter. Um, he predicted that, um, if you had a level budget, you would see a seven percent tax increase. Um, version two, we'll get into in more details a little later on. But what you currently have in front of you is basically a three percent expenditure increase. And we're looking at one, um, one-tenth of a percent increase over one, uh, two-tenths of a cent increase on the tax rate. What Rachel, whoops, I'm sorry, what Rachel was just talking about, um. As far as, um, you know, the legislation, and I personally have not listened to nor read the, um, governor's address to the general assembly a week or two ago, or whatever that is. But I've heard many people discuss that, um, he actually supported the, you know, the four-year-olds going into the public schools. In addition to supporting school consolidation and district consolidation, and save money, save money, save money. Um, so that, that, that drum continues to be beaten, um, from my failure. What I call the avoidable cost, um. And Rachel can tell me if I'm wrong or weigh in. But I think we've been fortunate to have the pre-K in the third floor of the tech center. I'm actually shocked that we can continue to license that up there. Um, I think at some point, the old shoe will fall. Um, you know, we would have to, if we did not do this, at some point in the next few years. We would have to build or lease a pre-K facility that is, um, appropriately designed for that age group. And, uh, I think on the low side, you're looking to be sent on a tax rate. It would not be an inexpensive venture. And then there's always, if, if you're in another facility, you got the administration, you've got food service. You've got all the other stuff you have to duplicate again, um, in yet another facility, which would, um, increase the cost as well. So from a financial standpoint, as most of you know, and all of you know, you've heard me, I'm not the educator in the room. But, um, from a financial standpoint, my opinion, I don't think you cannot afford, you can't afford not to do this. Key takeaway, just, you know, summarize, you know, we took a balanced approach to this. Um, wanna manage the educational and extracurriculars, we wanna reduce the transitions. And what, what that means is from a, you know, a child transitioning from one building to the other. So we reduced it from four to three, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, people are five to four or something, we reduced it by one, whatever that is. Um, you know, this budget helps us align the curriculum. Um, there's money in the curriculum department for, for that alignment. And, um, we think we've put together, you know, a cost-effective strategies along with the reductions of physical plan and the reduction of administration. And the, um, advantage of the energy efficient investments. And we, we are, um, delivering a, um, a solid financial plan for the, for the taxpayers, for the voters to support. We think we're giving them a, a, a very good return on their investment. And I think there's a bunch of references that I had no relationship to or connection to, but I'm not gonna bother to read them all. So, um, that's that presentation, and I think we probably should pause here and answer any questions that may come up.
Let's start, yeah, start with the board, any comments or questions from the board?
I would say this is a, a novel concept of us lately. This is a proactive approach to something that's coming down the pike versus waiting until it happens and then trying to piece it together with bubble gum and straws at the last minute. Um, it's kinda nice to see us maybe have a forward vision once again. I know that it'll come with hiccups, but that's, that's sort of my initial thoughts.
Okay, and this, this is.
I can speak to it too, no, so a couple of years ago, when we considered doing it, when my kiddo would have been that transitioning grade, I was all for it. I was really looking forward to him having those opportunities at Riverside. Um, and I think, you know, I think this version is much better planned out. Um, more thought out and has, you know, it laid out a little bit better than even the one a couple of years ago. So I'm for it, very good.
Sure, I can start, um, apologies, I have a number of questions. For, I guess I'm gonna start with the fifth grade moving. So if we're gonna go to a departmentalized model, fifth graders currently don't have a, uh, don't hold me to this. But I don't believe fifth graders have a social studies and a science.
They're integrated into ELA, but not separate.
They're integrated into ELA, but not separate.
So do we have a curriculum or will that, is that?
Yeah, so we, we did, we did, we know we have to, to um, you know, build it out, right? Um, and do work there. So there is money built into the budget to do some of that transition, with the teachers and developing, uh, doing that curricular developing. Uh, both looking at what's embedded, right? And what are the pieces that need to be added or changed?
Okay. Um, so I did see they will be included with T threes, that was one of my questions. Athletics?
Yeah, so.
Cause athletics are, fifth and sixth are currently parks and rec, right? So.
Depending on the athletics. Yeah, so individual sports, right, are the easy ones. Um, and Rich has been working with Parks and Rec around the, the, the team sports, right? The ones that are, are, that are in Parks and Recs. And I'm gonna leave that to him to be able to answer exactly where he is with that. Cause I know, one, that relationship's really important to us in keeping that relationship. And he's been doing all that legwork, so I'm not exactly sure where he is on, on all of the team sports at the moment. Um, uh, but that, that, uh, the, the easy starting point are the individual sports, track, track, cross-country. Um, yeah, are the sort of easy, easy roads that don't offset what Parks and Rec already does. Uh, but he is also working with Parks and Rec around basketball and other sports, team sports.
Um, with an additional grade going over there, is there capacity in the specials?
Yeah, so let me, uh, can I throw, I'm gonna share. I have, you know, what I shared with the budget committee when, uh, which will give you a little bit of a, a, a bookseat inside of like what, what the, and this was draft, right?
Well, I think she's asking capacities in the special program.
Yeah.
Not, not, not.
Not floor plan.
He really wants to show his floor plan.
No, I don't. So, London, sort of, yes.
But none of us have seen it.
It does.
It's beautiful.
It does, uh, you know, we will be looking at, you know, some sharing of PE staff, right? That was really, um.
I'm sorry, can you say that? It was me at sharing.
Sharing some PE staff, cause uh, to bring the fifth grade, uh, uh, to make sure that they have uh, PE every day. Um, uh, it also, the model that uh, music has been using, which is, uh, I don't know if you saw the sixth graders play, it was pretty, I thought it was really impressive. Uh, just from zero to what they sound like, which is kinda what our seventh and eighth grade used to sound like, to be honest, uh, in a half a year. So part of, part of what's built in here is some additional music with twofold, right? Is to continue, continue that growth, right? Introducing kids to instruments uh, as we develop the high school program so that, so that um, uh, that flows upwards. But the answer is yes. Um, students of fifth, sixth will be doing intros, they're not, they won't have the choice that seventh and eighth graders have. So uh, STEAM is working on um, uh, uh, thinking through uh, skill-building intros so that they can get much more advanced um, in seven, eight.
I still have more, just somewhere answered, so.
Oh, I see.
I'm trying to read through, so I don't ask all of them. Um, I know one of the questions I have, so around all-for-one and the space? Because currently it's all-for-one at Elm, all-for-one at Union, and then the space for sixth, seventh, and eighth. So how, what are the implications of that in this transition?
Yeah, so, and, and jump in here, Rick, I know Tammy's probably at the basketball game right at the moment. Uh, which I hear our drills are doing well this last one, I'm sure I got. Um, uh, is that they, there's some licensing, uh, in which I, the licensing lady is coming in next week, I think, to look at licensing. Um, and so it'll be partially licensed and partially the space. Uh, so Tammy's building out for that, you can speak more to that.
The fifth and sixth will be the, I don't wanna use daycare component, but is there a better way?
They, they fall under the childcare licensing regulations.
And then the, um, seventh and eighth will fall under the twenty-first century space. So there's two separate, there'll be two separate programs, as I understand it, right?
Mm-hmm, that's right, so there'll be some shared classroom space for when they need to break out.
Can I answer your question?
I think so, I think so. Um, buses, my unders, I don't have a student on those buses, but my understanding is that with being down a route and just generally reduced, I think we adjusted the, I know we adjusted the routes, those buses are very full. Can they accommodate another grade on them?
This one, I look at Rick. Uh, I, yeah, I don't wanna touch busing with a ten-foot pole, but um,
Where's the line?
Uh, but uh, my hope is we're running that route next year, like, how many years? I mean, what do, two and a half years or something of intermittently having that route?
But regardless of whether we run, I mean, those kids on that row aren't necessarily on other buses. I think those buses are just playing full.
Yeah.
We're gonna have to reconfigure those routes, we're gonna have to, because the, the buildings are gonna be different. It's gonna be different grade configurations at other buildings. So all those routes are gonna have to be rebuilt. With the exception of the high school, but high school and middle school like that.
Well, you have to rebuild them every year because kids, right? It's not the same kids, but in the same schools.
Right. The priority number three that we talked about with the savings that we have realized with our pre-K, that would not go away if we don't make that shift, right? That, that's, whether the pre-K comes over to Elm Hill or stays up here, those savings are savings.
No, we, yeah.
Well, yeah, if we're.
So the savings by not having kids on IEP or five oh four stays, that's not.
Yes, yes, that's, yeah, that's by design.
Yeah, I mean, the way I best describe it is for every child, Rachel can get into the district program. And when I see this, you know, I see money, cause we're saving future special ed costs going forward. Um, you know, and for every, throw something at it, Rick, it's up on the wood, you know? But, you know, for every child she can get into her, into her program, in-house program. Um, you know, we're seeing successes with that, which saves future money year over year over year going forward. So, yes, if we were to stay at the tech center and the state allowed us to stay at the tech center and we had five classrooms operating up there, um, yes, we would see that exponential cost up there too.
You're talking about we have two classrooms and those two classrooms would be moved over?
Yes, and um, just to kinda give you a glimpse into the world of early childhood, the reason there's two classrooms and that all-for-one operates before and after is things in the world of early childhood is truly governed by toilets. And so without major construction to the third floor, that's where we're maxed out at.
Um, is there any thought on what we're gonna do with the, if we're only moving to the extra classrooms, is that?
So we'll plan to add a subsequent, a classroom each subsequent year, because that's the direction all this is headed in. Um, those classrooms for the time being, uh, the state requires us to provide what we, Kelly can correct me, but I, I always refer to it as a dedicated community special ed room. Is that correct terminology?
Okay, so one of those rooms we could use for that. The state of Vermont requires our early childhood special education team to have a community room where kiddos that don't have access to free school, childcare, or might be homebound can get support services. So we'll likely use that for one of those rooms. The other two, they could serve as dedicated all-for-one classrooms. We certainly will repurpose them in the short term because we're busting at the seams up there. Um, but they will end up being used up in the next, it'll be like Domino's.
But the long-term plan is to have five pre-K classrooms up there, five K classrooms and five firsts. And we've talked about doing a third one this next year with this transition. But we all agreed, and somebody throws something at me after they disagree, but we all agreed that it would make more sense just to do the two classrooms next year and get the transition right and try to throw the complication in and growing a third classroom next year. So in FY twenty-seven, the plan is in FY twenty-seven will have three, and assuming the state doesn't force our, to do it quicker. Twenty-seven will have three, twenty-eight will have four, and twenty-nine will have five.
I think the last thing that I really would like to understand is.
One second, was I correct there?
Yes, yeah. And it, it is a substantial taxing on the maintenance department to set up these rooms for me. It's a massive amount of furniture they're building and, you know, taking care of all the things that have to be done. So with the grade shift, it would be a lot for them to bring a room on for me this summer too.
And that's an ideal, I mean, anybody that's been in L, it's an ideal single-floor primary educational facility. It's actually, in my opinion, probably designed that way.
Yeah, it's beautiful compared to flights of stairs.
I mean, the Union's closed, but you got what, four classrooms upstairs? You know, and it just wouldn't work in the primary structure from facilities standpoint.
The other big thing that I'd like to understand is about the transition and how we would plan to support that. For example, fifth grade has a really smooth transition into Riverside as far as um, the, the time that they spend with, with their, um, with Jan and Mariah and going over and all the transitions and those communication pieces. This is gonna mean two additional grades and it's also going to mean two grades from Elm coming up to Riverside.
Yeah.
What are, I'd really like to hear from the team, how that's being planned? Is it being planned? Can we support that this next year? Because that's a, a, a big undertaking.
Yeah, so for Riverside, I know Jan and Mariah have already met a while ago, in fact, um, to sort of start developing that transition process. Um, uh, and you know, I was kind of hounding you earlier, right? To, to make a decision earlier, cause I, uh, to be honest, I would have wanted some of the stuff in motion already. Um, that being said, uh, they have worked together to make, to make a plan that it'll look parallel to what we have traditionally known as fifth graders coming to sixth grade. Um, but the sooner we can get started, the better, more successful it'll, it'll be.
I recall that meeting and I said I had lots of questions.
Yep.
Same questions for.
Yeah, yeah, we, well, I, I, I'll go. You start, alright. So um, I've been working with my special ed coordinator, Courtney, she's not here tonight due to some medical things with her family. But um, we've been having some conversations around our current transitions and what it looks like and then how to make that more robust, making sure there's opportunities for the transition of whatever information needs to go for those teachers, meeting as teams, a dedicated day for the kids to visit by grade, so it's not overwhelming. Uh, we're gonna model a lot of what we use for the pre-K transition, thinking about how robust that is with the kids coming in on a couple of different occasions, being able to go over and see David's building, meet David's staff. We're hoping to welcome David's teachers for the um, incoming third graders to come over. Of course, the unique thing with this is our second grade teaching team is on hand. So they have an opportunity, many of them already know the first grade students that will transition. So that piece makes it a little bit easier, cause they're not gonna walk into a group of strange, strangers, they already know those teachers. What? Follow-up.
Yep.
I, I'm just, I'm just trying to be careful. I, I, I have concerns, you know, we, we, we've, the four of us have talked about the transition and we all get along and we all like each other. I think we're, I think we have different opinions about the shift. So I, I, I have concerns about two grade levels coming up to Union and um, the timing of the shift. Uh, but if you move forward and you decide to do this, then what Nate is talking about, that sort of collaboration, collaboration between Mariah and Jan, um, we'll do the same thing between us and Elm and do everything we can to make it as smooth a transition as well. So I'm, I'm just minding what I say carefully.
Are you done with your question for now?
I'm good for now, I may have follow-ups.
That's okay, I know the community members have some questions, but I just, to start off, when we were looking at a shift previously, we had grant funding that had come in late summer that we were trying to utilize to do a pre-K at Elm. And we were scrambling to try and get that in the budget process at that time. So at, at that time, it did feel rushed. We were trying to do it because funds were available and it made sense to do it because of the long-term savings of what Rachel pointed out with the special education saving. So it's like compounding interest when you have a student on a IEP or five oh four, you pay, it stacks on top of it each other year after year. So if we can eliminate that need at the start end, we all know that our special education budget is very high as a district. But if we see that compounding and we add the pre-K and we can see that slowly dropping, the goal was to eliminate, not eliminate, reduce our special education funding as part of this process. I think we're on track to do that. But administrators have been working on this plan for a while now, putting in the work. We've learned a lot from the last time we did this, tried to roll it out, that has helped this planning process as well. And we've implemented the pre-K successfully at the high school. So we, that was probably the biggest, scariest thing to do. Now, moving to, it to a new building doesn't seem as scary as starting it up from scratch. So I think the work and the planning has gone into this. I, I believe there's going to be hiccups with anything you do. There, there's something unexpected that happens that's gonna throw a wrench into the equation. But there's cost savings associated with it. I love the STEAM program at Riverside, I think it's great for kids to get them introduced in technology. I think the supports at Union for kids with math and reading are there that can help with that benefiting student success when we look at rating our, raising our scores, how kids achieve. And then I'm not as familiar with early education in that building, but it, if you're going back to play-based learning and kids coming together as a community and learning how to sit in a classroom, how to entertain, how to behave, I think it starts with that pre-K area. So there's huge benefits to us as a district to do it. I know not everybody's gonna be thrilled with two grades moving to Union or two grades going to Riverside. But if the state comes down and says we need a pre-K, it's gonna happen eventually. So putting the planning in now instead of a mandate being passed by the state in June and then we have to scramble on how we do it quickly, I think is, us being ahead of the curve is, is important to that. But that's just my two cents. I know you guys talked about it a little bit in the budget committee meetings. So if anybody from the budget committee wants to talk about it, then I'll go to the other questions. Right, you had your hand up first.
Um, you had some, yes, somebody put your hand up first.
Oh, okay.
Jennifer Dogg was first.
Yeah, Jennifer Dogg was first.
Jen? Jen Dogg?
Yes, hey, how's it going?
Good.
Um, I've been listening from all my, I've been coming to a couple meetings and hearing about concerns with the budget and such. And as someone who's actually in one of the buildings at Elm Hill and, and seeing, you know, the challenges that we're facing and considering um, the idea of moving the current second graders up to Union Street and then the current uh, kindergarteners into the, current first question, second grade, um, having two of the three grades at Union Street be brand-new and then reducing a classroom teacher in second grade. Um, and looking at the budget packets, um, it looks like you. Um, and looking at the budget packets, um, it looks like the projected total for grade two of students is ninety-four students amongst four teachers, when currently we have them spread out in five different classrooms. And looking at those projected enrollments next year, those look, that is the largest grade enrollment, um, from grades one through eights currently. But I'm also looking at if the work packet from the previous meeting when the behavior data was placed in there, when, um, the board had asked about the, uh, data on classroom evacuations. Elm Hill, um, we've had, uh, ninety-nine evacuations this year in, in four months of school. Um, and that's sixty-three of them in first grade. And they're spread out over five classrooms right now. And next year, we're gonna move them to a brand-new building and also put them into four classrooms instead of five. But we also, with the budget proposal, have a reduction in staff. And we're planning from a Union Street by the classroom teacher and also one of the instructor assistants. So I do have a lot of questions around how this is going to work. And are we setting up students for full year by, by doing this? Like, I'm not saying that the idea is bad, I'm just saying that there are so many things that haven't been addressed yet that I'm incredibly nervous about this being one of those second grade teachers possibly next year. Thank you.
Thanks. Does anybody wanna comment on that?
So the ninety-four is the current second grade class, which will be the third grade class next year. Current first grade is seventy-nine. And some of those, I believe, are out of district. So those class sizes are prob- at four are probably gonna be less than twenty.
Excellent. I think Serena had her hand up next.
Hi, it's actually not Serena, it's Matt Priestley.
I'm at-
Hey, um, why are we making such abrupt changes? So, I mean, we have the debacle, and I understand this needs to happen, but quite far, I mean, I've been somewhat involved in some discussions. But why are we muddying waters when you can't pass a, a inlet in this town? Why are we muddying waters with adding this right now? This school just has the capabilities of planning this stuff much further ahead than this. This isn't a new concept. So why didn't we start publicly talking about this three, four, five, six months ago? Instead of bringing it and dropping it at the budget table, when we have a difficult time passing a budget? Um, at least, we look back to when we need to change on the bus route that we still haven't mastered. I, I don't wanna see the same scenario happen again. And I don't think this is an appropriate time necessarily to be throwing it to the schools. Maybe teachers, throwing it to the public. We need to look at how we can build our ability to pass a budget. And by making a major school change at budget, probably isn't the best choice.
Okay, thank you for the comment. I mean, the, a major change like this has to be done at the budget time, cause it's, it has financial impact to it. So there is no other time to do it from, from my perspective unless somebody else feels differently.
No, I, I filed this under the if not now, when. You know, we've been talking about this actually for years. And, you know, I know it's scary and it causes a lot of anxiety. And it reminds me a lot of back when we shifted our school structure um, from community-based pro- or community-based schools, neighborhood schools into Elm at K to two and Union three to five. You know, my, my baby of my big kids, um, spent a year at Union, two at Elm, went back to Union for three and then transitioned up through and is doing remarkably well in college now. And it was, it was really scary to go through all of the scenarios and all of the fears. And, and I get that any transition at any point in time is gonna come with a lot of anxiety. And I, I was a hot mess when we went through that the first time, I'm, I admit that. But at the end of the day, the kids are thriving, they're successful. And sometimes we, we just have to rip the Band-Aid off and be prepared to catch the hiccups. And, and we have some great people that are, I know, willing and able and are gonna do right by the kids.
Can I just, thank you, can I just echo what Jen said for a second? And, and I know, you know, we can rip off the Band-Aid and we can I, I need to talk about my building for a sec. And, and we do phenomenal things with what we have, we collaborate, we're a team. I feel like there's just so much, so I would wanna hear a conversation around, here's what we're gonna do if we do this transition. Cutting from three IAs to two does not help. Moving from fifteen teachers to twelve does not help. Having a class size of ninety-five spread amongst four teachers, we bend and we bend and we bent. So from my perspective, if you go ahead and vote on this, I would love a conversation about what resources are we gonna put into Union Street School to make sure that we're not bending and bending and bending until we finally break? It's not fair to my staff.
Ray, I think you were first out of the people here.
I'm a military brat, so, you know, I went to eight different schools. I don't have any problem with transitions. I agree that, that children are malleable and adaptable. You know, I like a lot of what I heard about the opportunities that the pre-K kids would get at Elm Hill. I like the idea of the, you know, extra help of, of reading opportunities that they, you know, that the second graders would get at Union, although not at the expense of breaking Dave's teachers. The fly in the buttermilk. Sorry, can you take this out, the boy out of the south, you can't take this out for the boy. Is the, out of the eight different schools I went to, all but one of them had sixth graders even in the elementary school. Only one had sixth graders in a middle school setting. When I went to seventh grade, it was a junior high, seventh, eighth and ninth. And I can't tell you how glad I am, looking back, that I did sixth grade in an elementary school. Because with the, the shock of being thrown in with kids that were at that developmental place, I would not have been ready for it at sixth grade. And the idea of having it happen to my fifth grader, especially having seen it happen to my two older kids at sixth grade. And this is not a knock against Nate or Mariah, you know, I can't ask for, you know, any better people to be guiding my middle schoolers, you know, and the teachers there are amazing. I, I, I like them all. Fifth graders just aren't meant to be socializing with seventh and eighth graders. And it doesn't matter when you plan on doing this, that is not going to change. I don't want my fifth grader over there. My fifth grader is not ready to be exposed to the things that my fifth grader's going to be exposed to. And there's nothing that any principal, any teacher, any guidance counselor, they could come down from on high and there wouldn't be anything they could do to change that.
I, I had a wondering about, um, the fifth grade moving over. I know currently at Union they have recess, um, but if they move to Riverside, will they still be able to have recess? Cause I don't think RMS has a-
They don't have a playground, right? Um, our, so our thinking was, right, our next step, once the board makes their decision, is to engage, you know, parents in the conversation around the things to help make, you know, this successful for their kids. And we've started some of the conversation with the current fifth grade teachers. But I think that's a really important step, is right, engaging those conversations, uh, with parents. Around the things that, uh, just so you get answers around the specific things, cause everybody has different things um, that they're worried about that they want addressed. So that would be the next step, once the board kinda gives us the green light to move forward, is to start having those conversations to try to answer some of those more nuanced and specific questions.
Great, Sam, I think you were first.
Um, so I just wanna jump onto David's bad lack of concerns, because I, last year I taught kindergarten and this year I'm teaching first grade. So I've been with these, this group of kids for two years. And I am very, very concerned for some of them to go to Union Street. Not because Union Street is not great, I have a fourth grader currently, um, my older two children have gone through Union Street. But because our first graders will lose all of their people. Yes, they know some of the second grade teachers, but their first grade teachers, their kindergarten teachers, their reading interventionists, their math interventionists, everybody else in that outfield building, they will lose. So, you know, that's concerning for Union Street, because they already have things that they have to deal with. They're gonna have a whole new pool of problems without a planning room, without a good support system to support those behaviors. Um, reducing teacher numbers for our kids when we know maybe we need small class sizes to build those connections, to build new connections at Union Street. And if this is the direction we go, then we need to really look at how we can bring their people to them, through some more of them in their new buildings.
It's the eating system.
I've been thinking about this all weekend, actually, cause I don't like change. So initially I was like, no, this is terrible, now I'm like, open mind, you know, change can be good. I love the eight AM start time for all grade, you know, all the whole district, I think that's wonderful and that was a big change. So, um, but I do, I'm attentive to detail, like, that's kinda my thing. And so I know some of the stuff I'm asking is not even, maybe not wrong, but so some of the things, um, so I have a fifth grader right now, and so I'm thinking, he wears snow pants to school. He plays, uh, you know, goes sliding, he plays, you know, he does all the recess thing. Um, they have celebrations in their classroom, they have, you know, their Halloween party, they have their birthday parties. They have their little, their group of kids that now going, these two kids are going to Riverside, which I, I have a ninth grader, so they've been through Riverside. But now, again, they lose recess, they're, no one's gonna, middle schoolers don't even bring coats to school, war boots. So, you know, also they have, so, because, you know, they're not gonna wanna bring them because the kids don't like, so they're not bringing them. Now dances, our fifth graders will be going to dances, they probably should not be going to the dances, but, you know, there's dances. They're gonna be on the bus with high schoolers. They're, they're, so, almost like they're, they're growing up too fast. But I love being proactive with the district with the pre-K, like, that's great. And moving them into, you know, to Elm is saving money and that's great. But then our fifth graders are then being forced to grow up and like lose a lot of, uh, so one of my ideas was, and I had heard something about maybe a fifth grade would be down on the first floor or, and, and the lines would be like, you know, fifth, sixth line, so it'd be, so it'd be sort of separated a little bit. Also, the T three, it concerns me being fifth through eighth and the T three. Could we keep the fifth grade as their class, just like at Union Street with their teacher and have the four classes that don't change for all, you know, they have like their, their fifth grade class. They can go to their, you know, specials, but they stay and, so then they don't need to be in the T three with the eighth graders, because they have like their class. So that's a, a suggestion, is that we thought about maybe keeping them, so they're there, but they're sort of not completely there. They're sort, sort of still in their own little- The other thing is how we've spoken to the fifth grade teachers, current teachers. If they wanna do this, what if we lose some grade fifth grade teachers? Cause they don't wanna go and just have to teach English, they like teaching well-rounded, teach everything. So I wouldn't, I'd hate to lose some of those grade teachers because of this. And the other thing, I do feel like Elm, Elm Hill's, I mean, I feel like getting the, they're gonna have all these extra staff members cause of the licensing for the pre-K, they're gonna, like they said, they have all the paras. And then Union is gonna have, is, they're not gonna have, and then probably, I even know where they're gonna cut the space for. There's, the all for ones on the stage, and all for one gets two classrooms, I don't know, all for one's still on the stage at Union. I feel like if they're, the decision with staffing, I think there should be no cuts at Union. All, Union should get all of the staffing, because they're pretty much getting the short end of the stick for the district.
Uh, a couple of, one's a comment and then some questions that don't necessarily have an answer. Matt Priestley had great points, um, yo, why not bring this up, uh, earlier so there could be some more meat on the bone when you want. And I think, um, it sounds like there's an immense amount of detail to be worked out to, to have it be something that works across the board. There's logistics, there's, the teachers wanna do it. I mean, I'm sure some of those conversations probably happened, but there's a, there is that squeeze at the Union Street level, I can feel it. And then we talk about maturity levels and readiness and all types of things. I think there's a lot of stock, cost potential in doing this, because there's actual monetary component on the other end. Copyright all of that by saying that next year's budget cycle is probably gonna be pretty different based on the governor's address to the legislature, um, earlier this week. And in a budget where, a year where there's not that much of an increase, that's a really good time to really do it if it's gonna happen, but man, does it have to be done well. And then the, the actual question on the end of that is similar to, uh, it's another young lady's question behind me, related to, do teachers want to transition that off and say, do we have teaching disciplines established in the existing faculty to cover the departmental alignment? Do we have math, do we have science, do we have the specifics? And from a more strategic standpoint, does having those specific, um, areas of focus do anything in terms of hiring? So when one of those teachers wants to leave, is it easier to hire a math teacher or a science teacher versus a general curriculum teacher? I think I kinda have an idea what that might mean. So there's, there's some interesting strategy components underneath that, and I have longer-term benefits. So there's a whole bunch of things to consider, it sounds like there's a lot, a lot of stones left on, to look over.
Yeah, and I think, you know, one of the, the, so we have talked about teacher, the way the pre-teacher's around, kinda benefits of multiple models. And the next step, you know, I thought if the board decides to move forward, is to start talking about teachers around, would you like to come, where's your, where do you see your expertise? What is, what is it, uh, what is it that you see yourself being most successful? And to make that, and I, and I think David coined it in our meeting, is around building a cohesive team, right? Cause you're right, like, involuntary transfers seldom, seldom make happy people, right? And that seldom, I mean, I think people put a bright face on for kids, but we wanna do it in a way that kid, that teachers are excited about taking it on. Alright, and being part of building, uh, being part of building, uh, fifth grade program, right? And so that's, so we're really just waiting for that, uh, board to say yes or no, uh, before we take the next step.
One question. You don't mind? There's other people that had their hands up before you though. Zach?
So I have a couple of questions. David Collins, I'll try to go in great order. Is the projected 5-5-5 classroom model at Elm, is that supported by projected enrollment? The five, pre-K, 5K, five, that's supported in the enrollment that we were given? Yes. Okay. My next question is from the PowerPoint that I can't go back to, the 11, 4, 24 assessment model, where like 80% of assessed students were between one and three grades below. Was that data thrown against the educational, I'll say, resources or the things that were cited to say, hey, this move might not be a great idea right now for our district? Because, I mean, you know, unless these numbers are skewed, those are really concerning numbers to me as a parent of, of people in this district and kids coming up in this district. And then with this great big move, is that going to hurt us or is it going to help us? I don't know the answer to that question, not an educator, but I'm here to hopefully learn about that. I mean, you know, it's weird that that PowerPoint to me is not talked about more, because that is a huge number. We're talking hundreds of kids, one to three grade levels below where they should be. Again, take it for, with a grain of salt, everyone tests different testing models on computers are the best. But still, that's, that's very concerning for me. I guess my next question would be, a lot of the PowerPoint for what was, or what's suggested, I guess would be the right term, goes into the educational value and the educational side of things. But there's not one resource up there for the social, emotional and physical changes that someone who is, could be on the, the old side of nine, young side of 10, going into a building with someone who's on the old side of 14-ish. I mean, that's an intense period as a, as a male, right? I remember those years of my life. That is an intense period of personal growth, emotional growth, and just outside of education. I mean, that's something that has to be considered when going into that hu, I think that's probably the largest jump, would be from Union to Riverside. And I think that that also needs to be something that we need to make this change. And then, as you coined, is the RIF, are those actual bodies currently in spots? Or are those just numbered positions?
The IA is an actual body, is it? Is a body in a spot that would be moved elsewhere? But it would reduce me from three to two.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Allison.
You can let the people online go first, see if they can make it work.
Okay, Kaylin Barlow.
Hi, Colleen Barlow.
Sorry.
I just wanted to say, no, it's fine, all the same, I get it all the time. I just want to say that I agree with this overall vision, I really do. And I think at some point it's important that it happens, but I don't think now is the right time. We're in a mental health crisis, as I said, during COVID, mental health is going to be our next pandemic. We don't have a handle on behaviors, we don't have a patient in this district. And we're going to be getting a new superintendent. So I just don't feel like this truly makes the most sense to a major shift, because we're not just shifting grades and teachers. We're teaching, we're shifting reading specialists, we're cheap, we're shifting special education. So it's a lot that's happening. And I feel like this district has always been reactive as far as, or as opposed to proactive. And I, I just feel like we should take this time, this year, the rest of this year to plan and put this into motion and plan over the next, present year and next year to then make the shift. I just don't think right now is the right time. I think we're going to run into more than just pickups. We're going to be putting out fires and I, I just don't think it makes the most sense. And you're likely going to lose a lot of sound, correct?
Thank you. Serena or Matt?
Colleen had great points there, I think. Change, all of this. But I'll reiterate, let me use, like I'm not worried about this, I'm not worried about this. Like, kids are bad. I'm worried about getting tactful to obtain the blood that the kids need. We have a hard enough time with that. It's going to be a personal impossible to get a budget approved with the way, what the state puts out there. Rick, you can agree 100%. This is, you know, I'm out there, in the public, I'm trying to support the school district. It's really hard to support the budget for school district. When something like this is thrown on, with only just a couple of meetings ago, some of your police staff that's going to support this, they don't know what's going on. And that's exhausting the school district, looking really forward when we're setting a budget together. When the people that are supposed to be supported don't know what's going on. So this is one of those things that we did, should have been, like, here. Should have been, you know, put out in the public, Colleen, you can come there. It shouldn't have to be educating people to try to get involved with the budget and also trying to educate a whole new school program, which I agree needs to happen. But you don't have to call happens. That's just overload, everybody's already got a need set. Yes, it's pretty hard, you want to pick it up again? But we need, we need time to roll this stuff out. And rolling it out between now and voting day is not one of the things.
Great, thanks, Matt.
Allison was actually, sorry.
So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Allison, the last year I teach seventh grade social studies. But I taught at Union Street for 11 years. And before that, I taught second grade. No matter what the board decides, your educators and staff are going to do whatever we can to support your students. I've been in this district for 20 years. We're, we're going to step up, we're going to do everything we can. But I'm going to back up what David said. I was at Union Street for most of my career in this district. To cut a teacher at Union Street is cutting off, that's, you're best cutting off that staff of the main thing. You can't do more or less when it comes to your students and your children. And so it's a transition two grade levels over with one less person. And I, I'm looking at the numbers as well as you are. And again, I'm also a homeowner in Springfield, so I get, you know, my taxes are probably going to go up too. But at least if we're going to make this shift, you can't also reduce the number of people at Union Street. Even if that one, for one year, that class are extra small for one year. As Courtney said, those children are going to need it. As Colleen said, those children are really going to need the extra support. And also to not have a planning room is not, not, to not have a planning room teacher, to not have an IA in that planning room for those children. You're talking about the social emotional learning. Those are the people that support the social emotional learning. So your staff is going to do whatever they can, because that's what we do. Then we're going to go above and beyond as we always do. But there is also only so much we can do with the number of people we have in that district. To cut that in a year of major transitions, you're setting Union Street up to fill out this question. And those children are going to be able to.
Great, great. Thanks, Allison.
Two-part question. When I was very briefly a secondary education minor, secondary education was six through 12, and early education was K through eight, is that still the same?
Middle school license is five through eight.
Oh, so there's a separate third one now. Okay, so never mind my question, my, my point is not.
Okay, Matt, you're up next. Oh, it's still, Jennifer Dodge.
Hi again. I wanted to build on what Allison said, just the moment ago, and David as well. I, I wish the board hadn't tabled the behavior conversation in the last meeting, because it does show some information that I'm looking at that is making me incredibly nervous about the shift going from, you know, these, these two classes, the incoming second and third graders moving up to Union Street, given the amount of staff accidents that have happened at the hands of students this year. Betraying, there we go. And also just the, looking at only purely suspension and mostly the evacuation data with these two classes that are making that shift to Union Street. Like currently, we have at Elm Hill the model that you're hoping to build at Union Street next year. We're just cutting out the classroom teaching position in there and one of the IAs. And it's not really working at Elm Hill well. But I'm very worried about building this and moving that to a different building next year, where we don't have a current model in place that is working well. Like the, the numbers we have for staff injuries from students this year in four months is more than what we had the total of last year. And I, I just get nervous that the vote is happening on this before you looked at that behavioral data you asked for and before there's really a plan in place and before there's been conversation about really cutting the classroom teacher.
Jen, can I stop you for a second? Because we're talking about grade shifts and then we're going to come back around the staffing. So if the board decides we want to leave the planning room teacher in Union, that's what the board decides. So I think there are two separate conversations. One's around grade shifts, one's around staffing and budget. We don't have to accept what's been presented to us. We can move forward with the grade shift and say, we need the teachers at Union and add that into the budget. So they're not the same conversation.
I, I appreciate that, thank you. I just wanted to really make sure that my nervousness and anxiety is really coming through right now about this, and I hope that it is. Because I, I do love our students and I love our staff and how much we are willing to do, even though we are facing such difficulties right now. But I definitely have a lot of reservations about this, so I'll help you by now, thank you.
I hear your reservations, I just think they're two different, they're two different topics. They're, they're co-mingled, but they're separate at the same time. Okay, anybody else, questions, comments, otherwise I'm coming. Oh, oh, sorry, I missed it. Molly.
Hi guys, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so my first question is, why are you going down to four classroom teachers for second grade? What's the logic behind that?
Rick, you want?
Student population.
We, Molly, we went back and forth on this one in terms of the numbers. And these conversations happened several months ago. So Rick, if you, if your recollection is better than mine, I think that's just been what we've had at Union for better or worse, since, since I can remember.
Union's only had four sections for each, for each grade level. They currently have four thirds, four fours and four fifths. There has been bubbles every once in a while, you know, with 90, 95 kids in it. And no one has suggested, nor have, has the board increased teachers to handle that one bubble. You look at it for a couple of years and you say, okay, we can put some support in there, however we deal with it, I don't know, principals at the school deal with it. But there's, there's going to be no difference in the staffing size for classroom teachers at Union. There's going to be four grade levels. There are four sections of each grade level. It's going to be four twos, four threes and four fours. Four twos is based on student population. And we, as an administrative group and as the board, if they recall, two to three years back, I forget, maybe four years back, has always kind of been looking at that second grade as even at Elm, you know, should we drop it to four, should we drop it to four, should we drop it to four? And with this transition and with the projected enrollment of, whatever I showed earlier, 79 or whatever the number is, with some of those being out of district kids. You know, it's, the board's prerogative if, you know, if they, if they want to have a teacher in, they can have a teacher in. But from a numbers standpoint, and I, and I only do the, I only do the numbers, I don't do education. From the numbers standpoint, it doesn't, it's, it doesn't make sense to have the fifth second grade teacher.
For one year, but the following year, there's 96. There's 96 first graders, so for one year perhaps, that might make sense. But the following year, then you're trying to put 96 kids into fourth, second grades, correct?
Same conversation, we can always add a teacher in in that budget cycle.
Okay, well, speaking of that.
Well, no, so hang, hang, hang on, because everyone, everyone, everyone keeps messing up these numbers. So let me, let me, let me project them so that we're talking the factual numbers here and we're not continuing to misinterpret something. Give me a second to figure out how to do this. So now I gotta probably go back there and draw that. Somehow figure out how to know.
Yeah, see it? You got it.
What I'm a little bit worried about.
So the first, the current first, the current, current first grade is 79. The current second grade is 94. So what we, so what we would be projecting next year is a second, second grade is 79. We're actually forecasting 96 would be in second grade, or third grade. And again, some of those are out of district students. But it's a one-year bubble that you don't, a district from a numbers standpoint doesn't typically react to and, you know, hire somebody for a one-year term. The kindergarten is a little, kindergarten is a little awkward this year because it's small. But next year, we're forecasting 84. So it doesn't appear to be growing after that one-year bubble. But if, you know, you want to continue to have that teacher and matriculate through with that class, and I don't know what it does when it gets up to the middle school, but, you know, that, next year's second grade class is dating, you know, round number of 20 per class. And it's relatively similar or reducing after that.
Well, I see it more as a round number of 25 per class. But back to the conversation of hiring a teacher for need. Two years ago, we cut a reading interventionist with the idea that we'd revisit whether or not we needed that. And I don't believe we ever revisited it. So one of the questions I have for the board is the plan for your reading support staff to be supporting those fifth graders that are moving to Riverside for both reading and math? And then the supports that we'll have at Union Street for both reading and math? What the plan is for the interventionists? We also don't have a planning room. And we lost our intensive needs program, which is a really big hit. And I'm not sure if that's been discussed, about getting that intensive needs program back. I know it's a whole nother can of worms, but I'm just trying to ask the questions when I have the opportunity.
So Union is getting an additional federally funded support person in this transition. I don't recall the situation with planning room. I know there's been back and forth a few times, I don't exactly recall where we ended up on that, but.
Yeah, I don't, Molly, when you, when you say we were losing a planning room, what, what we're talking about is the reduction of three instructional assistants. Yeah, I don't, Molly, when you, when you say we were losing a planning room, what what we're talking about is the reduction of three instructional assistants to two. I mean, we we would still have a planning room.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, you're getting, you're getting an additional I don't know, support.
Intervention, interventionist.
Interventionist.
And will Riverside get one as well?
Riverside's getting one as well.
Good, great.
Riverside's getting more than just that.
And then lastly, the intensive needs program, is that even completely cut? And how are we supporting those children with our greatest needs?
I don't think it's currently in place, is it? Defensive needs program?
Oh, it's cut.
It's cut.
That was cut. Is that the year you're talking about years ago?
Last year.
No, it was cut last year.
Well, there was another in town support.
We'll, we'll have to come back to that one, Molly. I took a note of that one. Jody Paton?
Hi, I was just, um, I know in the past we've had trouble staffing. We come down right to the end of the school year wondering if we're gonna have enough teachers on staff. I wonder what this transition is going to do because I know it's pretty iffy for a lot of of teaching staff, what they're gonna do and if they're going to stay. So have we brought into consideration that we might possibly lose teachers over this transition piece?
It it needs to be part of the consideration, but I would rely heavily not as a board member on, I would rely on the administrators to tell me if that's a an issue or not, because we're not in the schools, we're not involved in that. So the the conversation, I don't know if anybody wants to speak to that.
I've got no indication that Riverside, right, I'm in a different place. I know we've had people proactively reach out to want to move to Riverside. Uh I, but we're, we're not, we're in a different place than uh the way it would, the ship to work at.
Yeah, we, we does folks.
Yep. Yep, Jess. Yep.
I know I've heard you mention that a lot of the details need to be flushed out once this is officially decided. But currently, can you walk us through the thoughts around fifth, sixth, and seventh, eighth? With, I've heard from a lot of the community members around concerns with fifth graders and eighth graders. Can you just walk us through right now preliminary thoughts around fifth, sixth, and seventh, eighth?
Yeah, I mean, and I'm never gonna have a perfect answer for you around, you know, fifth graders with eighth graders, right? You know, I think that's, a lot of that has to do with personal experiences in the community, right? Uh I I personally, you know, in a perfect world, we'd build a K eight school, right? Like uh um and uh we're not, I I don't see the 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 town is rebuilding, rebuilding school, schools to be K eight schools. You know, my uh and I, and I think you could, you can find research all over the place, right? Like um and, you know, the last, this is the third time, right, that we've looked at, at moving fifth grade to Riverside in different iterations. And this is always the sticky point, right, is is that uh and and some of the concerns are or, you know, it's a new environment and you'll have younger kids with older kids, right? But absolutely true.
Can I, can I, can I speak on Riverside's behalf as a non-biased person? I I, knowing what Nate and Matt and Riverside do? I I I, from my perspective, I don't have any concerns about fifth grade trends. These, these got, they, they, it's a great staff, it's a great administrative team. I I don't know if, I I know there's a lot of parent concern.
Yeah. Three through A school. I mean, I I don't have major concerns. I was just hoping like, for example, the fifth graders are not gonna be at lunch with eighth graders is like.
So that's, that's.
For example, right? Like, is that?
So I've built schedule models that you can go either way, right? Um and I've been waiting to have, to really engage stakeholders. Cause yeah, like we could do fifth, fifth, sixth lunches or we could do mixed grade lunches, right?
Okay.
I know, we've done both, right? Um what we found is mixed grade lunches behaviors are better. And every, and uh, you know, when we had grade level lunches, went to mixed grade level lunches, parents were really upset, right? Uh and then we went back to grade level lunches, they had made friends with kids at different grade levels, and then they were all upset. And and uh, but we found uh behaviors were better than the mixed grade lunches. And it allows you to balance things, it allows you to deal with, you know, uh ongoing behaviors, right, where you need to act like actually separate kids. Uh you could do it either way, right? Uh you can build it either way. And, but I think that's a conversation with stakeholders around hearing what what particular concerns are and thinking, thinking through uh, cause there's lots of these, I don't think of us no bands, right? Like that, like uh, we have some churches where there's no bands and they, right, uh uh and we have I was contemplating a robocall to parents, please don't drop your kids off in shorts and Crocs uh an hour early to school and it's twelve degrees out and expect people to go find them, right? Like, that's ridiculous. Um so uh uh, you know, uh, so I think that's engaging and 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 those conversations have to start like now, right? Around engaging families around their concerns and seeing what is adaptable and what isn't adaptable around that.
And can I just throw one? When we as, as, months ago, as an administrative team started talking about this, there were a few options on the table. One of them is we rip the Band-Aid off and we do it all at once. Another option was we do a staggered approach. So that's on the table too. I feel like if if we have, you have confidence that transitioning Riverside to a five to eight, they're primed to do that. And then we talk, and philosophically, I get the, I get the the discussion around pre-K and loading literacy and foundational skills and play, I I get all that. I don't, I'm not opposed to that. So I just wanted to throw out, with all the changes that we've had in our district over the last month or so, um my brain thinks back to this staggered approach as a, as a, as a potential sort of option.
And I'll just say that I have a seventh grader at Nate's building and he's a quirky little bugger. He came home one day and he said, huh?
Oh, seven.
No, not you. He came home one day and he said to me, he's like, the climate and culture is really good at Riverside, I have a good sense of belonging. He loves it. It it's a fun school. The, it's, I hate to say this, it's the funnest school we have. I, hands down, the funnest school.
Pop, so speaking, put a plug in my ear. Reminded me of one of my other questions around reading interventionists and bringing an additional grade down to Riverside. Are additional interventionists.
Think you gotta stick with the shift and then we come back to the, then we come back to the staffing.
Maybe it's built in to the.
But there is one.
Is it built in right now, though, was my question. I wasn't, I didn't wanna go down the rabbit hole of it, I just wanted to confirm.
Pending federal grant approval.
I just, I think we need to stick with the shift and then come back to staffing, because we'll never, we'll be stuck in this forever. Patty?
Hi, I know the last time that we tried to do this, um there was a community forum put together where you know, the community came together in cafeteria and threw out a lot of questions. What's this if it happens? Or if you're thinking about doing this, would you give the community a chance to voice their opinion before making your decision?
Yeah, I'm gonna speak to the group for a second and then they can segue in. We talked about this recently. And assuming we get support, I'm trying to figure out my partial words here. Support from the board to move forward that there was a general consensus that probably each of the buildings would probably do community meetings as well as a one large and, you know, we haven't scheduled all that yet, cause we didn't know what the board's direction was gonna be. But yes, we we envisioned that there would be multiple community forums to talk through the transition. Was I, did I say anything out of school?
No, I.
Not to pardon the.
I mean, from my, my perspective, right, you have the community forums and meeting with parents and the stakeholders, the kids are gonna go to Riverside and those are separate. Uh and and having those smaller conversations with like fifth grade parents right around and uh fifth and sixth, then, all right, one of the things that are on your mind and thinking about uh is different than the uh sort of overall shift, which has politics mixed in right around uh so I would see at the building level, it's around, all right, let's understand the needs of of your kids, right? Yeah, and build it, and answer up, making sure we are planning for the kids that are coming versus a bigger conversation that I think is like, like Patty described, that that we used last year and that that was looking at the whole big picture.
I see that you both, right?
Yeah, you say.
Building, building specific conversations and there's gonna be global conversations.
Right, Rick?
I just wanted to to reiterate, you know, based on something you just said, you know, again, it's, it's not a lack of confidence in Nate or his staff. And I hope I don't get too much hate for saying this, because I think that individually any one middle schooler can be amazing. But when you get them together as a group, middle schoolers are horrible. There's a reason why I wasn't ever willing to teach that age group. It takes a special kind of person to be able to do it. And my hat's off to anyone who can. You know, but that collective group horribleness is why I wouldn't want fifth graders with them. They're not equipped. They never will be equipped at that age. And I mean, I I hate to say it, but if this move gets made, I know that when my daughter Anaya reaches fifth grade, I'm yanking her. I I can't let her go to Riverside as a fifth grader. And I have to say that I'm probably one of your biggest cheering crowds, you know, for trying to support the schools. But I I have to say it, I won't let my fifth grader go to Riverside.
I'll say they're also pretty wonderful when they're together.
They they can be, but they are, they're, they're, they are a model of extremes. And no fifth grader is ready to deal with those extremes yet. I mean, please find, find me some facts that can change my mind on that. Nobody's been able to yet.
All right, I think I wanna draw this discussion to a close and just come to a consensus on whether the board's gonna support the, the grade level shift for next year.
Do you say that again, started here?
I, I wanna draw the discussion to a close and decide if we're gonna support the grade level shift for next year, cause there's there's more to get to with the staffing features and and other bits that come with this. Well, there, I, I think we're looking for a formal motion. So is there a motion to approve the grade level shift? And nobody.
Can you speak up? Sorry, I'm real troubled here.
I'm asking for a motion for the grade level shift.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make it.
So Jess is making the motion to, to move forward with the grade level shift. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Do you second it? Okay. Further discussion from the board around this? I'm not taking community comments at this point.
Yeah. I I was on the fence before I came in here. I can tell you I've made my decision based on, I'm a little disturbed that I'm hearing things from administrators that I haven't heard before. I'm hearing things from parents, which I constantly, we all have heard from parents, understand. My, my take is, why can't we wait a year? I understand Rachel's situation. I mean, we've had that discussion. But my perspective is, we didn't plan this totally. I mean, teacher shifts. We know the first graders are moving to second grade, we know there's problems. You, you know, Elm Hill, they're gonna be moving to Union, and if we cut a position, or we did cut the position. But I don't think, I personally am not comfortable making a decision right now, cause I don't personally feel that we have all the facts. We were given the facts, but I don't think we were given the facts that can base my decision on a yes or no at this point. That's, that's my, my take.
Jess?
Very similar to my thoughts. I'm, I'm personally, at this point, I'm in favor of the shift. I I I don't disagree with this move at all. I just, realistically, we have four months to pull this off. We are going into a new superintendent. So as a, as a leader for the whole district, we, we're not, we don't have one right now that could see this through to, to fruition and.
But we have several building administrators.
We have building administrators. I, I agree. I'm just.
Let's not take away from their leadership status.
But still, this is four months to, four months to pull it off.
So the, I'll, I would just say the details, the fine details is going to come from this team, not the superintendent, no matter who it is. So, so I, I would disagree with that statement. Nate's gonna have to set up his building for five through eight. It's not gonna be the superintendent who comes in and does that. He may go ask for guidance on, I've got a problem with it, but the details are gonna be left to him, much like to Rachel, to to establish what the pre-K through two looks like. So I, I don't.
I respect that.
I don't necessarily agree with, I, I understand you wanted to wait, but I don't think the superintendent is the key to the, whether this gets pulled off or not. I, I do think the, the budget right now is fully built around this shift. So if, if we're going to say no, we might as well in the meeting tonight and have them come back next Monday with, with round three, cause I don't think this looks the same. And the savings that we have associated with the shift goes away. So we're probably looking at further reductions elsewhere to maintain where we are currently. So there's fiscal, there's fiscal issues that come with that as well.
I agree, I agree with you. I think the budget that we have in front of us looks really good. It's based, you know, and I know it's based on the shift. And I am like procrastination queen. So to like, put this off for years, sounds great. But sometimes it I have a suspicion that many of the decisions left to be made, if we fast forward one year, are likely still gonna be waiting to be made. There's probably some minute detail, there's probably some details that can be worked out. But I know what's gonna happen. We're gonna, you know, if we wait a year, then next year, we'll be having the same discussion about waiting a year, cause it's, it's just what I've seen the district do over the, gosh, twenty years that, you know, my kids have been here. And I get it's scary, I get there's, there's lots of concerns and they're valid. I'm not discounting anybody's concerns, but.
I don't know how you separate this from a budget discussion either. It's not like we can have a community vote in May that says, are we gonna do a grade shift and not, and then not discuss it during budget season? There's, there's no way. Not to do the two together.
The last time we did this.
I understand our budgets failed multiple times, and why do this? I appreciate that comment. I'm not dismissing that one, but I think they are at the same time. I don't think you can do this separately from the other.
And I think, didn't the last time we do this, it was separate?
Yeah, we tried to do this separately. I was, I, I was the advocate for that one on the board, cause I thought it felt rushed and we should separate the two. I don't, I don't know if that was the right decision, if that, looking back on it.
And we never back, back out for a revote. What was it, like, two weeks later, the world shut down?
Yeah.
And we stopped talking about it. So to Denise's point, I mean, we knew this was gonna happen. We knew that at some point pre-K was gonna have to be at Elm Hill. And now potentially, we're gonna have, you know, a state mandate. And so three years ago, we stopped, we didn't accept it and we stopped talking about it. So yeah, it seems like it's, you know, all of a sudden, we're talking about it again. But come on now, in reality, this is something that's been back of everybody's mind for three years. Just hasn't been a, a front discussion.
Any other discussion from the board around this motion?
I, I am nervous about many years as well, with those two grades moving up.
I'm, I'm not, I, I'm in agreement on that concern, and I think if we I, if we were to move forward with the transition, I would support not eliminating the I A position in Union Street and keeping it.
Is it?
But the staffing discussion, I'm not taking comments from the, from the community anymore during this discussion, we've taken too many. So uh, the staffing and the grade shift are two different things, we shouldn't look at them a lot, and if we move, agree to move this forward, then we look at the staffing that the board feels it's gonna take to support that, and we put that into the budget. Alright, so I'm gonna call the motion to a vote, then all those in favor?
Bye.
Hi, from all those opposed? So three to two. Alright, so let's start looking at staffing then. And if it fails miserably, we can come back round two and not do the shift.
You mean it, staffing?
If the budget fails.
Gotcha.
It's just nature of the beast.
So what are we considering upon staffing?
I think we should look at where you ended up in version two for staffing, and then have a discussion around pluses and minuses in, in staff.
All schools, you wanna start at pre K or you're just concerned about Union, you wanna talk Riverside?
I think we have to look at them all, so maybe top down is the best way to go, cause the, the high school has limited changes comparatively.
Right, the um the high school, um, the, the only change is through attrition of, um, that's not totally true. Um, so we had a um, social, social justice worker through attrition.
Restorative practice student support.
Restorative, okay, whatever.
Sorry, I just wanna make sure I get the, somebody's gonna be in a panic that I did something different, so, just wanna make sure that's clear.
Yeah, so I should probably have Bill to talk about it, but um.
You had a sheet at one point.
Your point five foreign language shared between you and Riverside was reduced because we haven't been able to hire anybody in two years. Is that it at high school?
This is what we're lacking.
Yeah.
Is that the staffing change?
Staffing, yes, yes, please.
Uh, sure.
High school had the half foreign language, half restorative student support specialist. With no additions.
Yeah, number in too.
Yeah. That's the one.
So yeah, so high school, the restorative and the point five foreign language. Questions, comments, concerns about those?
No, no, no.
Riverside, so we've got the four fifth grades coming over. And I'm sorry about the, alright. So this is the support column. We're giving them a, a fifth grade, um, general ed para. They jump in if I go astray. They're growing a guidance counselor. Um, they're growing a point five music, which is the other point five that's been at the high school for at least a year, if not two years, that we can't hire, so we figured we'd have better shot at one oh. And the music program at the middle school is becoming very successful. And to give them more specials, to your point, um, to support that fifth grade, um, we gave them the other point five music. They've got two social emotional interventionists, which are support personnel that is speaking to the social emotional that somebody else was talking about. Um, and they're getting a math interventionist, grant funded, um, and they're losing the point five foreign language.
Well done, Rick. Well done.
So to support the transition, we're adding in the social emotional interventionist, a guidance counselor. And the, I'm imagining the fifth grade support's just coming up with the fifth grade.
Well, you're adding everything except for the four classroom teachers.
Got it, okay.
Everything else is added to support the, the new configuration.
Okay, any questions on Riverside? Union? So, so if we go back to Riverside for a second, I'm sorry. A lot of the conversation that we had previously with the community was shrinking the, I, I just want clarity from the board. We were going from five. Now that's, that's, that's Union, okay. Got it. Nevermind, ignore, ignore me, I was being boneheaded.
So I'm gonna show you Elm and Union together because this I actually probably get the titles in there too, so it's, um, so there's currently five second grade teachers. For ninety-three students. There'll be four second grade teachers for eighty students next year, of which, again, a couple of those I think are on a, pretty common around the district. So it's a little less than twenty in classroom. The one planning room teacher, Dave, you're gonna have to help me, I, I, I don't know, I guess I guess there's not supposed to be a planning room teacher, there's not part of the licensure or something, I don't know. But there is a reduction of a planning room teacher, and then there's a reduction of the planning room instructional assistant. And you got, this is the fourth, this is the four that's moved to the middle school four, so this is just a straight shift.
So we're down to Union then?
This is the reduction, so you're down a planning room teacher and an instructional assistant, am I correct, David?
Yeah, I thought the planning room teacher went last budget cycle, but if you're looking at it, then you're looking at it.
I don't think it was hired this budget cycle, but from budget to budget.
But it was still on that. It's, it's still on that, yeah.
And we didn't hire it cause we couldn't fill it, or?
I was told it was a licensure issue, but I don't know the.
There's no endorsement for a planning teacher.
Do you know, Alina, what the details of that transaction was?
It has a lot to do with what type of endorsement it would be to be a general ed classroom teacher. You'd have to, you couldn't be in that room serving that population if you were a special education teacher, you'd have to have a caseload that would go into there, so there was not an endorsement for the room as it laid out. And so it, we'd have to get super creative on how to hire and how to provide the proper.
So, other schools have planning rooms and resource rooms, right, so?
Well, they're still gonna have a planning room, they're just not gonna have a teacher.
But other districts have teachers in those rooms too. I mean, technically the board can make whatever decision we want to around where we put someone.
Did you mean other, did you mean other schools in the district?
Or even like other districts, like I imagine Chester must have a planning room in some district, Fall Mountain probably does at that.
New Hampshire, Vermont's gonna be different. Fall Mountain.
Oh, sorry.
So just, there's different licensing, same thing, components for the two states.
The district above us has planning rooms, so there's no, um, teachers.
It's all, just supports that.
S E I.
Can we, can we, sorry.
Social emotional interventionists.
Cool, yeah.
No, I'm just curious, I'm, what, what do you have in your planning room?
I have a teacher.
Thank you.
You have a special educator, we don't have planning room.
Right, I have a licensed program. Doesn't, it's a different structure.
What's the, what's the preference, to be honest, I'd like.
What's the preference?
Yeah.
To have a teacher, three instructional assistants? I, I was confused by the explanation when it was, when the teacher, planning room teacher position was cut, it didn't make a lot, I, I didn't completely understand that. Uh, the reason I might have.
I mean, for as long as I've been on the board, we've had a planning room teacher in, in these rooms, and then this over this, no?
Yes, we have, but they don't have.
But we, there's no endorsement for it, I, I've heard that.
Right, so it has to be called something else.
Oh, okay, so it's just, it's just dialogue on what we call the room or the position, or?
How you can license the position, so it's gotta be, it has to work within the licensing component.
So it.
So life skills is a different.
Think of life skills room instead of a planning room.
I'm asking for creative ideas, because I mean, we've all seen the, the grade level schools, we've seen the behavior issues, doing the same thing over and over again, expecting a different result is the definition of insanity, so it's, it's time now for us to do something different.
So it sounds like the middle school model of, of life skills with a special ed teacher. And, well, you have a special ed teacher and two I As.
I mean, we've heard from people about the, the behaviors coming to Union, the intensive needs classroom going away, we're taking positions away from there, it just doesn't seem to jive with what we wanna accomplish, so.
I'm also down to three special educators, whereas I had five a couple of years, and, and I'm not trying to add fuel to the fire, but we just.
Those positions open?
Uh, no, they were, the intensive needs program went away and the special ed teacher that was attached to it uh, moved to Rhode Island, and so that position was not reposted. So I lost a program and a special ed teacher.
I know, I know it's tough to differentiate between positions that haven't been filled, cause there's no applicants in it being counted, so. I'm on board for a different plan for the Union Street, what life skills and the resource room, planning room, whatever we wanna call it, needs to come back with to support the transition and the admin.
I mean, you know, going back to Chase's comment. Riverside's a great place, he feels a sensible longing, and so this room might be a component, so maybe this is the model.
I, I couldn't be more proud of my planning room, I, I would put that planning room model up against any, any, any building in, in Vermont, like I'm, it's, it's, it's the numbers for me. It's, it's, it's my model, my system is working. I, I, I just, when you, when you're transitioning two grades and the behaviors that I've heard, and it's cutting and cutting and cutting, there's no model that's gonna support that with what I have.
With these two positions?
My, my planning rooms, ask, ask my teachers.
So, these two positions for a planning room, or whatever it is we're gonna end up calling it, if it stays planning room, fantastic, but I wanna make sure that you're gonna have what you're, what you need to be able to make it suc- successful.
Right.
So is it these two positions?
You're talking about the I A and the.
The teacher and the I A.
That would be.
That's the ideal?
That would be great. I wanna hear Rachel, what, what do you need?
Not two Elm yet, let's.
Here we are, it's two Elm.
I'm, I'm still on, I'm still on just Union, we haven't really discussed the
I think Union is, that's the biggest struggle.
The adds or the minuses yet. I mean, do we want it?
I'll give you that. Rick, you have two more, can I all see it?
Where do I go?
I don't know.
Well, it, it, it's the AI in my brain, I'm fault.
I wanna hear some of you, but I, I'd like to.
It's because we've been recording for so long.
Right.
It's gonna shut down.
So. I guess I'd like to come back with version three with, if, if we need to support that, what that room looks like, it doesn't have to be those two positions, but but a conversation around what that looks like, I think is, is part of that. And then I, I don't wanna ignore, ignore Christina Perkins, cause she's raised her hand several times, so Christina. She's gone away, alright, if her hand pops back up, we'll come to anything else.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Right, right. I have this uncle, uncle. Um, I just.
We didn't, we didn't do.
I'm looking for a, yeah, second grade teacher at Union Street. Um, I think we need to take into consideration that we have first graders moving to a new school. Um, and so their developmental needs are going to be very different than what third or fourth graders need. Um, they're going to need a lot of support with the transition, and so I think having a second grade teacher um, would really impact, um, what they need to adjust successfully. So that's just what I wanted to say, that I think it would be a real hardship on the children to cut this second grade position.
Thank you. We can go to, I hear that, I'm, I understand it. Let's, let's discuss Elm for a little bit then.
I mean, I'd speak to, I mean, my I have a thought, uh, my vote would be to have a different teacher, and whether that is supporting the first graders who are gonna be second graders, or the second graders who are gonna be third graders, which is that bubble class, I, I, I don't know, but my vote would be to have that additional teacher in Union Street.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can here's my reservation. The, other than the money. So if we put, I'm getting, it's getting late and numbers are killing me. So the incoming second grade teams, class is, would have less than, or about twenty kids per class. But then we have, no matter what, in the, the structure that exists today, the kids that are gonna be in third grade are already going from five to four, it's just a bubble class. So, I mean, I can, I, I can support a teacher that might follow a bubble class, but what, what do we do with them? Or if we give general permission, we'll add this one teacher this cycle for David to use as David sees fit, um, based on the class structure. I'd love to have two, I'd love to like. I'd love to have two, I'd love to like. Up it, is, so there's more, but, you know, I, we have budgetary like things to keep in mind as well, so. I don't know, that's my really late night crazy thoughts.
I have no feeling around this one, I mean. The class size is going to reduce at the next grade level regardless. For many years as a board member, we've heard about declining enrollment and we're keeping the staffing the same size. At one point when we were having budget issues. Years ago, we had several cuts on the table and it was to reduce all the class, classroom teachers to four, not five. That was rolled back, so I, I. There's never gonna be a good time to do it.
Yeah, right. Wait, if we put in, back in the, the teacher for the.
Room.
Room. You know, there's a teacher there.
If kids need extra support, that room would, is supposed to be the support room.
Right.
I'm happy to take the motion around adding that back in.
Could I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Uh, it sounds like you've already asked for it to come back with version three.
Yep.
So my suggestion would be to come back with version three encapsulating a plan to deal what you described as the problem.
Okay.
Be my suggestion. For.
I'm happy with your suggestion.
And Dee, I think, I think I followed where you're going and I think I'm in a similar spot, but maybe we can talk so later. We can talk through it, but I, I, I think I hear where you're going.
Okay, do we wanna look at, just quickly look at Elm then and see if we're okay with the changes there? You have one more que- question for you.
About Union Street, I thought I heard mention of a federally funded position within Union Street is, would, I just wanted to understand which that was.
Intervention.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And so that.
Rick, does that specify on a, a math?
I think so.
I think it's a math interventionist.
It's not on here as a plus or a.
Union Street, I see that on Riverside, so I guess, when we see that on version three.
Nate stole your staff number.
That's why I'm looking at Nate.
You looked the other way.
That's an error on my part, shooting down here, cuz it was, it was grant funded, I didn't.
Nate hacked into Rick's computer.
He was just taking, had to wind the hard drive up.
Wait a minute, so I'm, I'm.
Yep.
I don't, I don't know what I'm adding back in version three in Union, is it just the teach, is it just the?
We wanna plan for the, we wanna plan for the room. And then you're, the administrative team is gonna come back with a suggestion on the teacher.
Oh.
That's what I heard.
It's not the planning room now, it's the room. Big difference.
Well, till we define what I did.
I just wanted, so one teacher, one IA. With maybe depending on what else is. Conversation, cuz if it's. Management standpoint, if you're gonna say, yeah, we need one in the third grade for that bubble, we'll use it in the fourth grade for the bubble. I don't know what's gonna happen when that bubble moves to.
Fifth.
Fifth, when it's gonna blow up that model of. You, you know, you don't want it, they're not gonna use it, or?
Can I, can I just, can I just, I think if we're well supported, I think we'll be okay for, for, for. I mean, I wanna think through it more, I wanna talk to my staff more.
Yeah.
But we've done it o- okay for years, I think the thing that is crippling us is the decrease in the number of supports.
Right.
So. That, that's where I'm leaning and I think that's where you were kinda, what you were kinda saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good on Union, alright, Elm, do you know what you're doing with Union?
I don't know, I'm, I fell asleep.
David seemed to have a good grasp on what we were asking for, so.
I'm good.
So Elm, so this is a combination of Elm and pre-K, obviously we, we consolidated the two administrators into the principal. So that's what the pre-K coordinated reduction is there. We have someone serving the eighth of a position as a secretary, we won't need that position in pre-K anymore. Excuse me. We are increasing the first grade para educator, so. I think if I'm wrong, Rachel, but you, she'll have one dedicated. Para educator per classroom, pre-K through. One.
K to one.
K to one.
The new ones are for first grade.
And part of that is, uh, we were able to reduce some. Small group special ed paras to, and those are under the special ed, which is a different thing. So that was, that was, those three are kinda paid for. And then there's a reduction of the planning room teacher that we're gonna call something different from the planning room teacher. And there's a reduction of the planning room behavior interventionist. And then there was added a planning room IA and a literacy IA. Rachel's gonna have to give you the details, cuz I don't recall or know what those details are.
So the, the biggest trouble, as you've all heard, is, I'll piggyback on David at Elm Hill, is behaviors. And the planning room, um, experienced a staffing change, which left us with. No teacher in the spots and, um. Without trained IAs, so we've been struggling with that this year, trying to train up new IAs. We do not have a trained licensed behavior person. Whatever you might want to identify that person is, whatever their license is, their title. Um, we also, same as David, no longer have an intensive needs room, so. Those two significant changes in the structure of Elm, I'll be completely honest, in my understanding, talking to the staff, is that's. What is causing some of the biggest challenges we face on a daily basis. So in my dream world, just like David, we'd have trained people in our room. And, um, we'd be able to support those students much better than we are now. And, um, whether that's through Alina's model of SEIs that she introduced me to. Or if that's a special educator, uh, whatever the structure is, we are struggling. You see the number and the data's there, there's no denying it, that's the reality. But that does mean a big change in the budget, yeah.
So you're adding in, we're adding in a planning room, IA, a literacy IA. Removing a planning room behavior interventionist and removing a planning room teacher. So you're advocating for a room, a room teacher?
I would love a room teacher.
And not necessarily the behavior interventionist?
I think whatever that person is and whatever we settle on, as long as we have someone that is certified in supporting children with behaviors. Um, we will be in such a better place. I don't know what that person's title is, we've, or what the room allows for.
So can we add that into version three as well?
Yeah, whatever you want. You had a free lunch in there.
I just have to say, I would absolutely support that as well, that not only benefits the students who need that support, but it benefits. All students to allow all students to access their learning as well if. Every student.
Yeah, I mean, we know from the data from pre-K that if we support the students at that younger level, that we see cost savings moving up, so. If we can get reading and math under control at that lower level. Than when they feed up through to the different school, then the support levels become different, so I would be in favor of that as well.
Can I, can I just say the added bo- bonus of having a teacher in that position, and this is not to speak of, of IAs who are chasing kids all day. If we could have someone, we have some classroom teachers who hardly ever need the support, right? That make very, very few phone calls to the planning room, we have some who, who, who make, make the vast majority of them. A teacher would be able to go into that room and model and co-teach and, and help with that climate over the first six weeks of school, and so I think. That, that's where we'd really get a lot of bang for our buck, having a teacher in that role, that makes sense. So we're gonna have the teacher back and the IA back?
I think we're just asking for version three.
On version three.
Well, they're gonna come back with a suggestion.
I think Rachel and I will likely come back to you with a similar model. With similar titles and roles and whatnot.
Okay. Alright, anything else on the staffing?
This, this cable is killing me. What's your question, Jess?
We have two, two budgeted.
And we, and just, just remind me, within the district right now, we have one, so we'll have a total of three, is what?
Well, we budgeted two.
Additional.
Help me.
No, a total of two.
Totally two.
That, that's a reduction from version one.
We, we don't, we don't have one in this year's budget, so this is budget to budget. Even though we hired somebody this year.
Gotcha.
From a budgetary standpoint, it's zero.
I'm sorry, maybe it's, it's late, it's getting on me too, I, I thought we had one. We were budgeting an additional three, so we would have one essentially for each school. And now I'm seeing that we're down to two, I guess I'm just really confused, and I thought these BCBAs would also support. Behaviors as well.
They, they do more from like an observational report, reporting, not as much sort of tracking and chasing, chasing him, you know, kids.
It's looking at behaviors, trying to design a plan, support system for the student, they're not working individually to. Help that kid, so from what we had in our notes, we hired somebody. And we were putting in one more for next year, which meant we would have two, not three, right? And they would do FBAs, functional behavioral analysis, they would do some of the coming in and saying. You know, by looking at the class dynamics, give you pointers, tips, and then that's where you would want your planning room staff to be able to work with. The teachers to do that.
I'm, I was super excited about four, and what I'm kind of seeing some nodding heads, it seems like they're comfortable with two, so I'm comfortable with two.
Well, I think part of that was, is trying to fill those positions as well. Again, we're into another place where some of these have been posted and. It's taken us quite a while to hire the one that we finally have.
I think the way Matt helps me think about it is really BCPA is kind of doing this, the child study and figuring out triggers. Building the plans, right, and the, the folks, these people are talking about, the people who are carrying the plans out, right? Who are, who are working with the kid to make sure that we're following through with what, what we need to do and, and. Those pieces of the BCPA is looking at what's working, what's not working, that, that's, that's, yeah.
I think we'll be okay with two. We're just like, you have one.
From my perspective, just reading the theories. If we can get two and we can get them functioning.
We can get one, 'cause we have one, right?
We have one.
Yep, you're right.
But if we, if we can have two, and they're functioning.
Yeah.
And we see the value, I wouldn't be surprised if somebody comes back and says they had like to hire another one. But right now. Right, right now, we think we'll have a hard time popping the second one, but we wanna keep trying.
Anything else around staffing? I got it for version three, uh. Did we, so they're still, oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
There was, there was still a recommendation from the budget committee around the. The nursing corps, they.
There are clerks.
Clerks. I just would like something from the board on.
I do not, it should be, I don't think it should be cut back.
Agreed.
I read through all of that, and that was a lot, and I know our kiddos are struggling with so much stuff. Again, it's another support person that can help our teachers and whatnot.
I think combined with that, it sounds like there was a lot more savings realized going through tech than was expected. When that was looked at, so I think that would, in addition to just looking at what the nursing staff supports, that would be another.
I don't, I don't think the budget committee had all the data. Okay, when they made that suggestion, I don't think the budget committee had all the data, which upsets me, so, um, but I'm in support.
Eric, put that, add a piece to it, it took all those reports, those year-end reports, consolidated them into a spreadsheet. Between the number of errors and miscalculations and a number of other things in there, the data would have been relatively useless anyway. It would have led us down a misguided path, which is a whole different problem. Um, which makes me beg to question even more if it's necessary, so. Uh, totals were wildly skewed, included things duplicate at times, there was no consistency, so. It would have been a challenge anyway, it's more of an operational, functional, managerial thing, but, uh, it would be helpful to have those numbers. Just as a comment ahead of time, and with the issues that were found in them.
Alright, so support and keeping those in?
Yes.
Great, what else for tonight?
So, the increases with. The support rooms. I have a better description. Are we looking for offsets, or are you just expecting a pure growth as a result of those?
I lean toward pure growth. But, you know, keep, think about if there is an offset available, certainly let's take it, but.
I don't think, I don't think there's much, I mean, we went.
Right, I, I can see this budget is.
You know, these guys probably have some sore arms over there, because we went through some difficult budget conversations. To get this to where it's at. I don't know if there's. They're welcome to call me a liar, but I don't know if there's much more in there that can be reduced to offset those increases. But I just wanted to make sure I understood what your expectation was, I can do either, I just don't know what your expectation is.
Rick, the, the three IAs that I had, was that a cut down to two, or is that a re, uh, uh, reclassifying or. Putting that position somewhere else, or was it a straight cut, I can't recall.
I think it was just a reduction.
A reduction.
So I think, unless I'm reading this wrong, there's actually a number in here that's not accurate. I was gonna talk to you about it after, but I think it will actually cover one of your positions. Um, the removal of second grade, your five positions of three hundred and eighteen thousand. Up under Elm Hill, you then have. Following me so far? You then have your addition of second grade moving from Elm of four, which is also three eighteen.
Yeah, it's an error, but this is an independent document, so it's not.
Okay.
It's not in that calculation.
It still is like sixty thousand dollars, which.
Right.
Is one of the positions.
That inflation is not in the calculation.
Okay, well done, I tried, I tried.
I was feeling good about it.
I know.
I know.
I thought, I thought she went.
Mostly we didn't find any Rick error mix. Mostly we invited Rick error makes me feel.
She went in overly confident though.
Did you get your answer? Cause cause I gotta tell you, like, everybody's adding and it can't come
Yeah, you're, no.
To the high school to ask us to cut. But we're the ones that graduation rate, drop out rate. That's where it starts, is the high school. So that's where, you know, and they've gotta have options. And so I, that, I'm a little concerned about if you're asking to come back, cause everybody else has added and it's cut, and it's been that way for many, many years.
We've never had, just, can, can I have a moment? Just enjoy this for a second?
Sorry, we've never had it, so.
I mean, I, I, well, put it up on the board. Um, you know, you, I think from a tax standpoint, we're in a very good position. Um, you know, you're, from a tax rate standpoint, you're two tenths of a cent. Um, you know, I, I wanna think one cent is roughly about a hundred and eighty grand, which two hundred is a round number. Um, teaching position is gonna be roughly a hundred and twenty thousand salaried pennies. Um, IA position's a little more than a para, so it's gonna be salary pennies of around seventy-five. So I'm gonna have two, three forty, one fifty, three ninety, four hundred thousand, a round number. So it's gonna be, I'm just doing this off the top of my head, nobody quote me on this, but it's gonna be probably two and a half cents. Probably on the tax rate. Which, I'm not saying any.
What is that?
You're basically flat now, so you're talking a tax increase of around three, two and a half cents.
That's you coming back if you add them both in. I mean, that's a
Right. Right. And there's still state factors that are either gonna make it better or worse that are yet to come, that may not show up until May, long after the vote. Who knows when they're gonna show up? But, I'm just giving you the lay of the landscape. I'm not, I'm not advocating or arguing for or against anything.
I mean, for years, we've reduced staff, reduced staff, reduced staff to pass a budget. And we've, at the same time, hear from the community that our end results and student outcomes continue to diminish. And the two track together, so if we want the student outcomes to improve, either it's behavior or emotional support, educational outcome, then we have to start to add things back in, so I'm in favor of growth.
I think in particular, with this grade shift, we need to be positioned to support these students at all levels. In all of these grades, this is, this is critical. And it's not, I was on the fence about it, I'm in support of it, we voted on it, but we need to be well positioned to support these kids with this transition. And that, if that means growth, then that means growth. And I think that we need to be able to stand behind that with the community when it comes to this budget. That it is what we can do to support these kids.
Can I have you write that down and sign that?
Yeah.
So I'm in favor.
I agree. That's why I was trying to make the distinction between the, the staffing changes and the grade shift. Because you have to make a decision on one before you can make a decision on the other, cause they're, you have to go forward. So I apologize if I was aggressive in pushing for the grade shift, but I felt that would steer this conversation about where we are with the planning rooms.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
And other instances, because if we said stay with where we are, then we probably wouldn't be adding all these positions in or or doing different things. It would be a different conversation. So if the budget goes down or passes, what's that?
It helps you pay for it.
Yeah. Because we're paying rent for the tech center, right? For the pre-K classroom, so we're saving money with the transition. So if we said, no, we don't wanna transition, then we would be having a different conversation about what are we, what are we taking out of the budget? Pay for the, pay for the rent. Alright, so you've got what you need for version three. We're good. Anything else for tonight? Alright, so is there a motion to adjourn to go into executive session for supervision of the public push? Either the last, is there a second? Just seconded, I'm for the event. Uh, with invited guests, Rick, memory. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.